Good evening, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, Thursday, September 24th, for our City Council of Calistoga Candidate Forum. I am Yolanda Chambra with the League of Women Voters of Napa County. Tonight, we're here to help educate Napa County voters by giving you the opportunity to hear from the candidates for this race. While we usually provide in-person forums due to COVID-19 restrictions, we're coming to you via Zoom webinar. We're providing Spanish translation via the Zoom interpreter capability. If you wish to listen to the Spanish translation, click the globe-like icon on the bottom right of your screen and check Spanish and check mute original audio. Our translator for this forum is Gabriela Vargas. We are recording this forum and it will be posted on YouTube, our LWB website, Facebook, and at our other social media platforms in about seven to 10 days. Per SEC rules, no other recording of this forum or excerpts from LWB recording are allowed. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We are nonpartisan and do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League does participate in issue advocacy and voter education. If you would like to join us in our org, please visit our website, lwbnapa.org, for membership information and much, much more. The League encourages civil discourse and the candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. The candidates have agreed to confine their remarks to the qualifications and issues and not to resort to the formative remarks about the other candidates. Microphones and video are off for everyone except the candidates. In the LWB forum too, there is no chat or Q&amp;A capability for this session. The questions for this forum were solicited in advance from the community and from our League of Women Voters members over email. We had LWB team screen the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. The number of questions we ask depends on the time available. Our LW team helping with this forum tonight are: Our timekeeper is Bernie Brooks. Our co-host and moderator is Vida Flores. Please note that our moderators are here on behalf of the League of Women Voters and not in any way to express their own personal opinions or that of other groups to which they might belong. I will not turn the evening over to Vida.
Thank you, Yolanda. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have all four candidates running for two seats on the City Council of Calistoga. Each seat is for a four-year term. Our candidates are Michael Dunstford, Lisa Gift, Iris Ortega-Lopez, and Spiro Macris. Thank you for all, all for being here tonight. Before we start the Q&amp;A, let's go over a few ground rules. The order of answering the questions will be in alphabetical order and will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond to each question. Candidates, please keep an eye on the timekeeper screen. Can everyone see the timekeeper? The timekeeper will signal candidates with bright color backgrounds, yellow for 30 seconds remaining and red for time is up and stop. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one and a half minutes for a closing statement in reverse order from the opening question. Now, let's begin with our first question. And we'll start with, we'll start with Michael Dunstford. The first question is, what experiences have you prepared, have prepared you for the position? I repeat, what experiences have prepared you for this position?
Thank you very much for the question and thank you for hosting this forum. First and foremost, I've been a business owner here in Calistoga for over 30 years. So both my mother and myself own and operate the Calistoga Inn. In addition to that, I've served on the City Council for the last 16 years. And I've been appointed by the last three mayors as the vice mayor. That has given me a lot of experience and insight to how city government works. I've been involved in numerous subcommittees representing the city of Calistoga. I have served on the Napa Valley Transportation and Planning Agency for 12 years. And I've served on the Napa Valley Flood Control Board for the last four years. In addition to that, I've been appointed to numerous subcommittees. I currently sit on the subcommittee that is focused on affordable housing for Calistoga. I also represent the City Council on the Tourism Improvement District Board, which oversees grant monies that we distribute to the various projects in the community. I've also have served on the--
A minute and a half goes by quickly.
I'm not seeing the--
So you're not seeing Bernie Brooks? You don't see the red right here? So click on the view. You can change the view to the speaker view or the gallery view. So are you seeing multiple people in your screen right now? So at the top, right, there's something that says "view." Did you see Bernie Brooks earlier today? Can you come back on, Bernie? Do you see Bernie?
Maybe you have to scroll to the right or the left to get my--
Picture, yes. So if you've got a list view across the top, you have to press the arrow. There's an arrow that allows you to go see other speakers. Are you seeing Bernie, Michael? Can you hear me, Michael?
I hear you.
Okay, are you seeing all of the candidates, including me?
No.
There we go. Okay, great.
I'm sorry about the hangup.
That's okay, but you see Bernie now.
I do.
Okay, she's gonna go away. Thank you. So Lisa, the question is back to you.
Great, and thank you so much for the question. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
So as a resident at Calistoga for the past 10 years, I have been actively involved in our community and outspoken on many issues. I care deeply about the community of Calistoga, our residents, our safety, and where our future goes. I've lived through numerous chapters of my life here, from being unmarried to becoming a homeowner and now raising a family here. And as a small business owner and parent, I understand firsthand the challenges of what it all takes to make it work. I feel that the City Council needs a voice for the family members and working class of our community. And if elected, I will work tirelessly to be a voice for the workforce, business owners, and proponents of healthy growth. I can't hear you.
Thank you, and now for Iris Ortega-Lopez.
Yes, my name is Iris Lopez Ortega. Yeah, it's fine. As a resident of this community for the last 20 years, I have been raising my two daughters here. And since I came to this town, I became very involved in the school, in the school district. I was a volunteer for many years while my daughters were growing. I did, I've been involved with the Latino community, raising their voices. Eight years ago, I was appointed to be a member of the City Council. And during these eight years, I have been learning how this government system works, why we need to follow the rules and regulations that we need to follow. I also have been serving in different committees. And I have been representing the city in the Lico cities of California and at the state level. I, as I say, or during these years, I've been having, getting the experience of how government works. And I think all these years, they are helping me to, you know, to learn the system.
Thank you. And now for Spiro Macris.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, thank you.
I've got a, I think, a very well-balanced background. I started off in small business, worked for Corporate America. I have education background in architecture and engineering, worked for Corporate America in the food and beverage industry, volunteer at various organizations, involved in the Calistoga Active Transportation Committee, and a father, a father of two, a grandfather of one, married for 40-plus, 40 years now, and resident of Calistoga now for seven, and visited Calistoga since childhood, my wife and I. So we both have a love for Calistoga. And that's why ultimately why we came to Calistoga. So I look forward to the opportunity to serve Calistoga as I have and as I, hopefully, in a new and different role as a council member. Thank you.
Thank you. And our second question, we'll start with Lisa Gift. Please explain your vision for the future of our fairgrounds and how would you fund your ideas?
So throughout the past year, we have been in negotiations with the county. We're in an incredibly unique situation in that we have a fairground that is based inside of the city limits. And with COVID, that sale had fallen through due to a number of issues. I applaud those that were on the board for not accepting what was currently being offered because I think first and foremost, preservation of those grounds within our incredibly special city is very important. In addition to keeping open space, also trying to analyze the former reports that were done at the Fair Board, by the Fair Board, to see how it can be lucrative in tandem with doing all of the necessary upgrades, which unfortunately, after fairgrounds were not funded anymore in the 80s, the county had let that go to dilapidation. So there's a lot of issues that need to be updated in the fairgrounds. And I think through future use, we can improve that property and have it really be a great asset to the community. And I look forward to being part of that as a member of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Iris Lopez Ortega.
Yes, during these eight years to be a council member, I have realized how important the fairgrounds are for our community. I always been supporter of acquiring the fairgrounds. I always been working with the City Council, with the mayor, and with the community because I understand the value that these fairgrounds have for our community. I'm willing to keep working, you know, to, unfortunately, because COVID-19 is getting our way, we were not able to finish acquiring the fairgrounds this year. But hopefully, we're gonna keep working with the county, having a good relation with them and come to, and at terms that it will be good for our community and for the county as well. I know the importance and I'm willing to work hard and put all my effort to be sure that the fairgrounds stay in Calistoga and belong to Calistoga. Thank you.
And now Mr. Spiro Macris. What's your vision for the future of fairgrounds and how would you fund your idea?
Sure, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Calistoga. Seldom does any city have the opportunity to acquire such a large parcel within city limits. I see that being used as for parks, recreation, entertainment venue. I think that the city obviously worked with the county, had a deal in hand. COVID did get in the way, but as far as I'm concerned, doesn't change the dynamics of the opportunity to purchase it. I actually would encourage the City Council to go forward with it. I actually not even quite sure why they have hesitated now, other than, of course, financials, and that is a big issue. That being said, I think we should proceed and purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My turn?
Michael, we're going to start with Iris for this next question.
Don't I get to answer that question?
Oh, pardon me. Go around. Yes, answer the questions.
Okay. So I have some big concerns about the fairgrounds. I absolutely value the fairgrounds for what it offers our community in terms of event spaces, fundraisers for our nonprofits, cantineras, wedding parties, concerts and entertainment, also the golf course, recreation. The problem with the fairgrounds is that it's a massive liability. So for the city to acquire the fairgrounds and take ownership, it's gonna cost us millions of dollars to bring it up to ADA compliance and to outfit the existing event spaces so that we can continue to use them. This presents a real challenge. It was, it made sense about a year ago or more when we looked at the price and our financial position. But due to COVID, we basically have just wiped out about four to five million from our reserves. Plus, we were not able to be in a position to get the necessary financing. I do think we have to work with the county. I think with the county maintaining ownership, we still have all the leverage in the city to get what we want. And that's gonna require bringing in some sort of third party that's gonna be willing to take the risk and make the investment. But we have to work together and be very careful about it.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Iris Lopez Ortega. How do you envision Calistoga meeting its Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, requirements in a way that targets housing for all income levels?
Yes, housing has become not only a local problem, it's a state problem. We had to follow the rules, the state rules and regulations about that. But we had to be careful because not all the rules and regulations apply to our small town. We had to have balance. We had to have balance in how we're gonna proceed with this because we have in Calistoga all income levels, not only low income, middle income, or high income. We had to find a way, we had to work with other organizations like Corporation for Better Housing, for example. The city, fortunately, before COVID-19, was able to acquire two properties that are holding to develop, you know, some housing for our residents and was for our working force residents in Calistoga. So we, it's something that is a long term, but we had to have the balance, had to work together. So we provide housing for all levels in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Spiro.
Yes, thank you. Housing is not, the housing issue is not unique to Calistoga alone. It is a area-wide problem, a statewide problem. That being said, Calistoga has a general plan that takes housing into account. As a community, how can we assist to ensure that we do get additional housing but still follow the general plan that was developed by the community and our elected officials? I think we go after specific targets. It could be affordable housing, workforce housing, identify which are important to us as a community, and then designate licensing fees, permit fees, hookup fees, various things, and discount them or eliminate them to encourage partnerships to allow those to actually happen. It is not a single person's fault, it's not government, it's not private sector. We need to work together to achieve that. And I think the city has the ability, working through licensing and permits, and then bringing interested parties together and working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and unmute your mic.
Thank you. So over the last number of years, the city has been working to bring more housing, housing that's affordable to the city of Calistoga. Specifically on Lower Washington Street, there's some new apartments that were constructed a few years ago. The city bought and owned that property and then basically was in partnership with creating those apartments. It did the same thing with the apartments up on Upper Washington that are painted yellow, I think they're called Calistoga Family Apartments. Same thing, partnership, city owned the property, and then we partnered with the nonprofit to construct the project. We also purchased two lots behind Calistoga Spa on Eddie and Earl Street with the intent of approving some sort of workforce housing project. Housing is the number one issue facing Calistoga. We have two resorts that are currently under construction. The Four Seasons Resort is gonna need about 150 employees. The Rosewood Resort is gonna need about 150 employees. And we now have the Veranda Project, which is the expansion of Indian Springs. We have to make housing that's affordable and target our workforce as our foremost priority at this time. And I'm committed to doing that.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you for the question. And again, as a resident of the community for the past 10 years, I've been outspoken on housing. One thing that I want to bring to the forefront is the housing elements of the general plan are required by state law to be updated every eight years. And we are getting close to that point, which is January of 2023. As we get closer to that date, I'm getting more concerned by the lack of focus to build more affordable income housing. If I was elected, as we're required by law to grow, but we are within an agricultural preserve, we are limited on how much we can build in the long run. To ensure we're making the best use of our very precious resources within the city, within the agricultural preserve, I would consider rezoning anything that's considered rural residential into allowing housing on it for the future. Additionally, people are very concerned over the wastewater issues and water rates. And we are a very small community in which these rates are spread over a very small number of people. And we are continuing to build the necessary housing as required by state law that would ultimately lower our wastewater rates. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And on this next question, we'll start with Spiro. Reset the time clock and we're ready to go. One of the general plan stated goals is to maintain Calistoga's small-town character. How would you balance that with Calistoga's need to increase housing and revenues?
Increase, I'm sorry, increase that in revenues?
Calistoga's need to increase housing and revenues.
And revenues, okay. So again, I go back to the general plan. Ultimately, it has been studied, it has been decided collectively, and it is in compliance to a state. So I, first, as far as growth, we follow the general plan. I personally don't think that we rezone. I think that we follow the plan. And we have actually many lots available within Calistoga. Ultimately, we follow the general plan and we go forward. And the general plan has timelines that will be revisited at future dates. And as specific parts of it come up, we do look at that. If it's appropriate, we could modify the general plan. But to make modifications to the way the zoning is done, I think is short-sighted. I think as a city, the general plan takes into account traffic flows, the impact on the community outside of just that specific development. That needs to be taken into account. Before you modify the general plan and before you do other things to it, you have to look at it at its entirety and what is the impact on the entire community. We can't be short-sighted about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
So about 14 years ago, I initiated the Economic Vitality Group. And the purpose of this group was to look at, confront, and make recommendations to the City Council about the various issues that will be facing our community with the years to come. That led into the creation and adoption of the Urban Design Plan. That was the very first and foremost recommendation that we made to the City Council. The Urban Design Plan is basically a subset of the general plan. And it addresses and actually reestablished much of our zoning and basically created a blueprint to be used as a tool for the planning commission so that when projects come before them, they have some guiding principles in making decisions. And the challenge, of course, is how do you balance development? Because people who own property, they have rights to develop with protecting the rural character of our town. And that's why people come here, is because of the uniqueness, the genuine quality of Calistoga. So we have to preserve that, but we also have, we have no choice but to grow. But we do have some say in how we grow. So it's controlled development, quality development, development that's gonna create a benefit and become an asset for our community.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, thank you so much for the question. And I think first and foremost, the great thing about all of us running for City Council incumbents and us that are new are that we care deeply about the preservation of this wonderful city. And I certainly plan to raise my son here all the way through graduation. So the last thing I want to see is for the city to blow up and to be something that it's not currently. However, I do understand the state laws and that we are getting close to that eight-year mark. And while we had the Yellow Rose Project that's already kind of going forward, I am not speaking of that project, I'm speaking about other property opportunities within the city limits, which there are close to 40 acres that can be zoned for housing. And I'm not just talking about middle-income apartments, but single housing that people can actually afford to buy, who are our policemen and our firefighters and our teachers. I think that is, should be a top priority to continue to build on the workforce and continued population of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris?
Yes, again, it's everything about balance. We had to balance our general plan. We had to balance the needs of our residents. We had to balance our budget, including there. So we had to take in consideration all the facts. We cannot just say, you know, focus in one thing. We had to take in consideration all of them and come with a plan that all the residents of Calistoga can have quality of life. And we can provide housing, you know, as I said before, for all the lip and levels in, or income in Calistoga and for all the different types of families or for all our seniors. So for our workforce. So it's about working, you know, also taking, as I said, in consideration of the-- in consideration of the rules, the regulations, the general plan, and the city budget, and the desires of the of the residents. So it's it's a very long, long term plan that we had to keep working on it. And we have been doing that in the last eight years since I'm being on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Michael. Calistoga's budget is highly dependent on TOT, hotel bed taxes, which go up and down with the ebb and flow of tourism, while residential and commercial property taxes are more stable. What is your vision for keeping the city fiscally solvent? Michael?
Well, I think there's no question, we're a tourist based economy. TOT makes up about half of the revenues for our budget. It's a very competitive market. We're competing with other small tourist destinations, both nearby and far. It's important to keep us relevant, to keep us fresh and interesting. I think our downtown needs a lot of help. It needs a lot of beautification, a lot of restoration. We can't allow ourselves to become stale and idle. It's no different than your own business. You can look at the Calistoga Inn, for example. We've made a significant restoration, renovation, improvements over the last few years. And I think it's been appreciated by, you know, all of our guests that come and experience it. And we've we've seen the successes from the investments we've made. So I kind of look at the downtown and the city as a whole as something very similar. We have to protect our our small town rural character, but we have to keep ourselves fresh and relevant and and somewhat modern. So it's a balance, and we have to also make sure that we have a workforce that it can afford to live here and raise their families and work in these these businesses.
Thank you. Let's reset the time clock. And now Lisa. Your turn.
Yes, so I am really proud of the city for having the TOT taxes that we have in place because they've gone into so many amazing social programs. However, there needs to be a focus on the revitalization of downtown. We are seeing some serious main street light and a huge part of that is, I feel, the expenses of the rents that are there for the business owners. People cannot afford to stay in business and with what is in place. So I think that you need to look at the budget as a whole, including the TOT tax, but not just be dependent on that as your main source of revenue and figure out how you can revitalize and get taxes from other aspects of business, whether it's through vacancy tax for store front that have been vacant for over a year or other, you know, ways that we can bring more revenue to the city. Certainly prior to COVID, we were in a really good place. And now with COVID, it's been part of the reason that we were not able to acquire the fairground property. So as a city council member, we would really have to assess that budget and look at it over the next, you know, long term period. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris?
Yes, Calistoga is being a tourist town for many, many years, you know, back a long time ago. But as a business, we had to invest. We had to invest in our town to to make it more beautiful, to make it attractive. So that means, you know, as I say, invest and and that means that we might have to 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 do some extra tax taxes to property owners. We had to, we had also to work with our residents. We all, we cannot only think about the tourists bringing money to our town, we also had to think about our residents, what they want to see, what they what they like. And and you know, uh, do more outreach in 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 our communities to see what everybody would like to see, not only my own opinion, but everybody's opinion, so we can come to a better and and a long term plan for our our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Spiro?
Yes, thank you. The TOT taxes obviously are huge for Calistoga. We have two hotels coming online shortly and and one additional expansion at Indian Springs. So with the economy hopefully picking up as we come out of this COVID-19 and new units coming online, our TOT revenue should rise again as a city. So we use those funds to revitalize downtown. It's tired. We need to make it attractive for for tourists to come, visit and spend their dollars, and also for to attract businesses. Both will are are an integral part of 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 making Calistoga healthy. Additionally, I actually think that we need to look at the the business taxes that we charge the businesses. The times being what they are, businesses are struggling. We need to encourage the ones that are here to stay, try to make them successful if through that possibility. So I think as a city, we look at reducing or suspending the taxes, the business taxes at this time to to ensure that that we do have a business to revitalize. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. In this next question, we'll start with Lisa.
I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes, I was just getting ready myself. Sorry for the delay. In the past, the Calistoga community expressed strong concerns over the water rates and the planned rate increases. What ideas do you have around providing water to the city, conservation measures, and ways to mitigate the rate increases mainly for the lower income families?
So that is a very great question and one that has gone across many generations. However, water is not actually the issue. One of the biggest sources of our water, about 50% is coming here from Kimball Dam right in town. And then we're getting water from Lake Tennessee and the remainder of the water is coming from the Delta. So water is not really our biggest issue. Our biggest issue is the wastewater. I do applaud the current city council for doing what they have done, which is subsidizing the wastewater rates to the tune of about $250,000 per year for residents. They did not bankrupt the city by continuing to increase those subsidies as we've seen them so far. However, the best way to reduce those wastewater rates would be to add additional housing that is much needed for our workforce and so that we can amortize those high rates over a larger population. Additionally, adding or approving the resorts that were previously approved helped lower those rates as well, which was done by the current city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris?
Water is being a big issue for our community since I moved to this town. It's expensive, but the problem is 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 is, you know, it's been a problem for many, many years ago. So we need, as as again, is another another investment that we need to do. We increased the race because our water system and our wastewater system, they were running in red numbers for many, many years and because they were not changes before. So we did have to do the, you know, this this part of increase the race because we had not know another choice, you know, when we took that decision. But this is a long term decision that eventually is gonna be, we're gonna be able to to fix the problem and and then we will be able to have affordable clean water for all our residents. The expenses to maintain the system are huge, so we need to figure out, you know, keep working and how to make it affordable for all.
Thank you. Spiro?
Water rates and the availability of water is is not unique to Calistoga. I think throughout the state, multiple cities, most cities are grappling with this. That being said, the the city council historically put off needed repairs and maintenance, basically kicked the can down the road. And 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 then they finally had to deal with it. There was bond issues, they needed to stop subsidizing the the water rates, and that was unfortunately part of the problem was is people really didn't understand the true rates, the true cost of the system. And and as a result, they the city needed to pass those true costs along, and and thus we had these these horrendous increases. And we're not done with them. In January, this can be another 10%, and then following January, another 3%. So we're we're in the midst of this, and it's not, it's not pretty. There's no question about that. That being said, we need to maintain our water system. We need to make sure that we're spending the money and maintaining it so that we don't have more expensive repairs down the line. The other is wastewater is an issue. What are we looking at gray water? We have new projects coming online and developments. Let's use wastewater, the gray water for those facilities as a way of lowering our sewage costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
It's true that we inherited a problem. The city councils of 20, 30, 40 years ago did kick the can down the road. They basically didn't make the investment to upkeep, keep up with the repairs and maintenance of our infrastructure. About 25 years ago, the city was forced and mandated to spend about 14 million bucks to upgrade our sewer treatment plant to come in compliance with the state of California. But at the time, the city council really didn't have the backbone to increase water sewer rates at that time so that the revenues basically would offset the cost of the financing. So over time, the shortfall was covered out of general fund money. And as Lisa just pointed out, we're still doing this to this day. There's a shortfall. And the you can do that for a short term, but you can't do that long term. When the resorts come online, that's gonna provide more revenue to help offset those shortfalls. When we start receiving TOT monies from the resorts in the future, we will be in a position to create some sort of subsidy to offset and reduce water sewer rates. It's not now, but it will be coming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And now this will be our last question for the evening. And Gabriella, I'm going to ask you to skip down to question number nine. So this is all on our minds. So question number nine will begin with Iris. And Calistoga had several community building events before COVID-19 restrictions were in place. Looking into the future, what do you see for our community after COVID?
I will ask you to repeat that question, please.
Sure. Calistoga had several community building events before COVID-19 restrictions were in place. Looking into the future, what do you see for the community after COVID? If there is an after COVID.
Well, that is a long term, long term. It's gonna take long, long time for us to go back to normal, to have community events and and to be together as a as a as a the community that we always been. You know, is 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 uncertain times. We don't know exactly what's gonna happen. So I don't think we all have a straight answer to that. We just have to go day by day and and see what happened in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Spiro?
Yes, thank you. Community is such a huge part of Calistoga and and as a small town and and a long history, we need to get back to community building events. We need to have our music in the parks, the the Independence Day Parade and and fireworks, our tractor parade, just to name a few. We absolutely need them, I think, when 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 the environment permits, however that may be, we we start to work towards having those again. But absolutely, we need them. We need the bingo, just the firefighters, a fundraiser. So we need these various events. So so as far as I'm concerned, we we obviously follow COVID guidelines and and make sure to keep everybody safe, but we will get through this. And and in the end, we will have our community back together and probably stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
So I think it's imperative that all of all of us who live in Napa County have to do what we can to keep our COVID numbers down. We're in a very unique situation with our climate that allows for a lot of outdoor dining with a very extended season, wine tasting outdoors. We have a unique opportunity that we can create a viable business climate during COVID-19. And I know that's not true for everybody, and there are many people out there suffering. But compared to other climates, we are much better off. We we have to, in my opinion, just take a pause for the next six to eight months and not have community large events. We need to pay attention to the science, we need to protect each other, we need to protect our guests, and we need to get through to the spring. We have to get to the other side. We have to wait for the vaccines to come online, ensure that they're safe. And and I'd say in about a year to a year and a half, we can really start coming back full steam and having all the community events that we love and that are great for the downtown. But we have to be strong and stick through and follow the science until we get to the other side.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, community events are a huge part of Calistoga. It's how we all get out and we see each other and we build funds for all these wonderful causes that we love and support. And there is absolutely no doubt that we want to get back to all of that, that we all miss music in the park and we miss our fried chicken and fireman's bingo and all of those wonderful things. But again, we do have to be incredibly careful about what we're doing and those steps that we're taking and making sure that they are in the right timeline. And additionally, there are things currently as far as the drive in movie theater that's at the Geyser and these social distancing activities that we can currently do safely. But I certainly don't encourage those anytime before we have a vaccine. And I know Calistoga, as a young person and now as a mom, when we have that vaccine, we will be right back into all of those wonderful community events and fundraising events we all love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, let me start again, before we begin with the candidates' closing statements. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Napa County, I want to thank the candidates for running for elected office and for their participation with us this evening. We especially thank the audience for joining this session to meet the candidates and for proposing your thoughtful questions. For further information about our upcoming forums, all the candidates and ballot measures, please visit the League's easy to use website, l w v napa.org. Our website has a link to our Voters Edge site, which has expanded information about candidates and ballot measures, links to the locations for vote centers and drop boxes, and to many other sources of information about the upcoming election. And I just want to remind And I just want to remind you that your Dropbox is going to be at CalMart Downtown Calistoga. If you would like to be involved with the League of Women Voters, Women and Men Helping Make Democracy Work for Everyone, it's easy to join. Visit our website, lvnapa.org. A reminder that the deadline to register to vote is October 19, 2020. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation, since you last registered, you need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. It's secure and easy. In Napa County, voters will miss, voters who miss the October 19 deadline may register conditionally and vote provisionally in person at either the registrar of voters' office or at any of the Napa Vote Centers beginning Saturday, October 31, and until 8:00 p.m. on November 3, Election Day. You can now follow your ballot through a new tool called Where's My Ballot? A link is available on our website or go to sos.ca.gov. Last but not least, please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Every vote counts. Now back to the candidates for closing statements. Reverse order. Each gives closing statement for one and a half minutes. Thank you very much. And we will start with Spiro.
Thank you very much, Evita. And thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum this evening. Very well done. Thank you. Sarah, Calistoga is an amazing city. That's why I live here and that's why we chose to live here. We could have chose other cities to live in. It could have been San Helena, it could have been Healdsburg, it could have been anywhere else. But we chose Calistoga because we love Calistoga. My wife and I love it. My family loves it. We're committed to Calistoga. We have a historic past and I think a very bright future. We need to work towards that. It doesn't come easily. So we discussed a lot of issues today. I think that's really unfortunately just the tip of the iceberg. This call today could have probably gone on for hours. That being said, what do I bring to Calistoga? I bring a diverse approach to city government with my balance of corporate America, having worked for corporate America, having owned my own businesses, being a family man, being on various committees. I balance payrolls. I work within budgets. And in the end, my door will always be open to Calistogans. I will represent you fairly and honestly. And please, your voice will always be heard. I will never cut anyone off. Discussion should go on until everyone has been heard. Thank you. And we'll look forward to the opportunity to serve you all. Good evening.
Thank you, candidate Spiro Macris. Now Iris Lopez Ortega. Iris Lopez Ortega.
Yes, first of all, thank you very much for all the attendance and for the League of Women Voters for putting this event together. I really appreciate the opportunity. 20 years ago, I established my home in Calistoga. Eight years ago, I had the privilege to be appointed as a council member for this community that I call my home. These eight years, having filled it with new experiences and rewarding moments, and also a lot to learn. At the same time, we have encountered a lot of challenges, including the devastation of natural disasters like the COVID-19 pandemic right now, which has impacted the lives of all of us in various ways, socially, emotionally, and financially. I had decided to run for reelection because I believe that there is still, there is much to be done to keep improving the lives of our residents, including our working families, the whole community. I want to keep representing the people who don't have the privilege to voting and whose voices are unheard. Calistoga is a great community to raise a family, to work, and to retire. And I commit to listen to the voices and to bring the attention of all of our community needs, not only to the local level, to the state and federal level as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, candidate Iris Lopez Ortega. And now for Lisa Gift.
Thank you, Evita and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. As somebody who has not run for office before, and you know, I must say, it's not easy to put yourself out there. But the reason that I am running is because I truly care about our community and our residents and the families and the people that are building a life here. I think that it's really important that if you are going to vote, you ask yourself, what are the reasons that the candidates are running? I know that I would be absolutely honored to serve alongside any of the incumbents that are there. But I think it's an important question to ask for the new candidates that are there. Additionally, I also encourage you to vote for two, no matter who. And we are trying to run a fair and equitable election here. And I will work, please know I'll work tirelessly for you, for the family members, proponents of business, and healthy growth within our city. As a councilwoman, I will strive to preserve what we all love about Calistoga in tandem with a strong focus on healthy growth. I understand firsthand the challenges of raising a family in this beautiful place that we are all truly blessed to call home. So thank you again for this opportunity and please reach out to me anytime with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Lisa Gift. And now for Michael Dunsford.
Thank you. I've obviously been doing this for a long time. It's a lot of work. I'm prepared to give myself to this job for another four years. There's a lot still to be done. There's very important issues facing Calistoga. Obviously, COVID-19, the economic fallout from that. As a business owner, I think I'm best positioned to assist the city through that process. Wildfires, this is an annual occurrence. I've been through three wildfires representing the city of Calistoga. I walked Calistoga Springs and Chateau Calistoga and pounded on doors at 3:00 in the morning with Supervisor Diane Dillon evacuating our town. I've been through the Kincaid Fire and the Valley Fire, setting up the emergency command centers and dealing with the evacuees at the fairgrounds. I've been through a lot. I have experience. Housing is first and foremost a very serious issue that we got to focus on. I want to stay committed to that. As I mentioned before, we have the new resorts coming online with a large number of employees that are needed. It's got to be our number-one priority and I want to continue to help try to solve that problem. Thank you for everything. Thanks for the forum and thank you to the other candidates. And I wish everybody luck.
Thank you, candidates. That's it for this forum. We thank you all again for being here with us and wish you a good evening and happy voting, everyone.